All right, we're gonna get started. Thank you guys all for being here. If I could ask everyone who is gonna speak today to please turn their cameras on so that they are on the screen for this recording. And then after you're done speaking, if you're not a candidate or moderator, please turn your video off just so that we can focus on the candidates and moderators. But thank you guys so much for being here. I'm so excited to be able to sit down with city council president candidates and have this important conversation. If you don't know me, I'm Emma Tinsley, Executive Director of the Old Fourth Ward Business Association. You know, we thought it was really important that we could get in front of candidates early this election season and ask some nitty gritty questions about small business policy and entrepreneurship and neighborhood business districts in the city. So I am so excited. This will be our third candidate conversation this week. I told folks yesterday that at our first forum on Thursday, one of the candidates told me that they spoke with 20 or more small businesses or small business owners just to prepare for this event. And so that really warmed my heart. I just wanted to share that information because I really think that is a huge reason why we are doing this. We want to hear from candidates for sure, but we also really want to encourage candidates to talk to more of our small business owners, entrepreneurs, and those that are trying to start a business. So again, thank you all for being here. I want to thank our sponsors real quickly, especially our presenting sponsor MailChimp and Amherst Bank, R Bar ATL, One Source Graphics, and Palm City Market. The questions we're asking today have been informed by over 70 suggestions that we received from small business owners and entrepreneurs throughout the city. Huge thank you to all of our partners that shared that survey and everyone who answered those questions. And a huge thank you to our partners Little Five Points Business Association and Ideal Design today. We are really excited to be able to partner more with the other business associations in the city and are kind of realizing that that's going to be a really important piece to our work moving forward. So on that note, I would love to introduce Ms. Kelly Stocks from Little Five Points Business Association to tell you a little bit more about their work, and then we'll introduce the moderators and get the show on the road.
Okay, hi, I'm Kelly Stocks. I'm from Little Five Points. My family owned a small business in Little Five Points from 1968 to 1998. Little Five Points has a lot of rich history, a lot of legacy businesses. We have the first credit union, the first co-op grocery store, and these kinds of neighborhoods are, you know, we have throughout the city of Atlanta. It's what helps make Atlanta the unique place that we all love. And I would really like to see Atlanta leadership recognize the role that commercial neighborhoods play in creating our city's identity. And I would like to see them do more to support us. We need funding, we need security, we need all kinds of stuff. So thank you, Emma, and the Old Fourth Ward Business Association for coordinating everything and including us in this event.
Thank you, and thank you for making this virtual platform available to us. We really appreciate that. So without further ado, I want to introduce our awesome and fierce moderators that have been kicking it out of the park the last couple nights at our other forums. So we are joined by longtime Atlanta native and editor in chief of Butter ATL, Mike Jordan. I don't know where he is on your screen, but he's to my left, I think, or right. I don't know. He's right there. And then we've got Atlanta Civic Circle Housing Reporter and freelance reporter for New York Times, Atlanta Journal, and other publications, Sean Keenan, joining us as well. So I'm gonna kick it off to y'all, but as a reminder, candidates will have one minute to answer these questions. We have a timekeeper. Adam is on the call keeping time. You will hear a fairly obnoxious buzzer at one minute, so I'm not gonna play it for you, but you'll hear it, I promise. And then you will also see me hold up this sign. You'll get about 10 to 15 seconds to wrap up your thought. Worst case scenario, we'll have to mute you, but that has not been a problem so far. And I think we have a very pleasant crowd of candidates here today. I don't think that'll be a problem. So I'm gonna kick it off to our moderators. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Emma.
Good morning, everybody. So Sean, you want me to lead off as usual?
Yeah, yeah, kick us off.
All right, all right. Well, good morning again. As Emma did mention, our presenting sponsor is MailChimp. And MailChimp wanted us to ask a question, which is actually a really good question. It's provoked some really good answers as we've asked it in each of our events. So I'm gonna share it here and ask for this question. We'll go ahead and start with Ms. Archibong, and then if anyone else would like to come next. I know we have our hand raise feature, but since it's not really a system where we're going left to right, the next person who wants to answer would just go in the sense of a hand raise, and that way we can just keep it moving. But the question is this. MailChimp has heard from its customers in Atlanta with smaller businesses that they could use support with access to improved technology and business mentorship. What role do you think the city should play in providing accessible mentorship and technical assistance programs? And how would you improve upon what is currently offered? So Ms. Archibong, we'll start with you because I'm sure that you can speak about what is currently offered as well as the other part of that question. But again, what role do you think the city should play in providing accessible mentorship and technical assistance programs? And how would you improve upon what is currently offered? Please take it away.
All right, thank you very much for that question. In terms of what's offered now, pre-pandemic, I, because of the income inequality in Atlanta and recognizing that entrepreneurship is a pathway to having economic stability, I offered legislation that was unanimously approved, which established the Small Business Advisory Council. That body is looking right now as we speak at answers to the kinds of questions that you ask. What role can the city play to strengthen and support our entrepreneurs around the city? As you may know, I'm a small business owner myself, and so I get that entrepreneurial space very, very well. And so we have Invest Atlanta as an entity that we do utilize now. There are partnership opportunities that are going on in the Eastside Ted area where they're rolling out technical support. But I'm looking forward to the work of the Small Business Advisory Council to refine and to bring new and better ways that we can support the incubators and the small businesses that make our community so rich and vibrant.
Thank you. I believe, I couldn't tell if it were Doug or Mike. I still see Doug's hand, and then after that, we'll come to you, Mike, because I saw a quick blip. But we'll let Doug take it, and then we'll come right back to you, Mr. Russell.
Thanks. First, let me just say, thanks for doing this. It's a pleasure to have one of these in my neighborhood. I'm a longtime resident of Fourth Ward, just down by Jack's Pizza. So thanks for putting this on. You know, I think there are some institutions and nonprofits in Atlanta that exist that the city's role can be in both making sure that folks know that they exist and the offerings, but also helping to support financially. The Russell Center is doing incredible work, helping technically with entrepreneurs. Emory has a program that has long worked in various neighborhoods in the city through the Goisweta Business School. There are programs like Dragon Armies 48 for 48, which builds websites for nonprofits and for, we can scale that up for small businesses as well. I think that we should find programs that are in the community that are working well, and that the city should be both almost a publicity platform for those, but also can help with funding, because a little bit of funding in those situations can go a long way to really accelerate small businesses as they are in the startup phase.
Thank you. We'll let you go ahead now, Mr. Russell.
I think that was Mr. English, but I am a small business owner. My husband and I, we started a small company, Anders LLC. You can look this up online if you want to buy some gifts. And I found a lot of challenges in this city of trying to get initial capital and networking. And I think the city can do a better job of making those things available. I don't think necessarily that the city has to do it. I think the city just needs to make people aware and help connect the dots. I think it's much better when you go to somebody who's owned a small business. The other issue is networking, to get in the network in this city so that you can get the resources that you need. There's another thing that's lacking. Our business unfortunately suffered a great deal under COVID. And I think there needs to be more help, not just for startups or to keep people in business, but also those who are in the black who were successful before COVID that went under because of COVID. We need to reach out to them and help them get back on their feet, help them reestablish their businesses, because it's just unfair that they lost their business due to COVID, and there's been very little help for those folks. There's a lot of helpful folks to stay in business, but not a lot of helpful folks to get back in business.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, and thank you for the politeness of even saying, I think it's Mr. English. So I see we're having a very cordial thing here, which is always awesome. So Mr. English, I will let you go. Sorry again, but please jump in.
No, no problem. Well, again, thank you all so much for putting this on. I think mentorship is incredibly important. I think what's more important for small businesses actually is sponsorship and access to capital. Currently in the city of Atlanta, you have a system where the large corporations get the bulk of the capital that's available. I think we need to turn that on its head, actually. I think we need to heavily invest in our small local businesses, our startups, our tech entrepreneurs, and everyone in between to ensure that they have actual dollars in their pocket to grow their businesses. Those dollars need to be early. They need to be in the friends and family round of of the investment cycle. And I think also they need to be low barriers. Oftentimes, what you see what happens with small businesses is that they don't meet the high barrier that Invest Atlanta often puts before them to get access to that capital. We need to lower that barrier, invest in our small businesses, because what we know is that when we invest in our small businesses, they turn around, they hire locally, and they grow our economy.
Thank you very much for that. All right, I'll pass it to Sean now, and I believe, or did I, no. We did get everyone on there. We have four folks. So we'll go right ahead. Sean, popping in.
All right, yeah, thanks, everybody, for joining us. You know, during these last two forums, I didn't have to look at myself the whole time, and I'm realizing I'm desperate in need of a haircut. So I will not tolerate any hippie jokes today. But yeah, I'll launch right into it. So based on the the input that we got from local businesses while we were compiling these questions, it seems like the city does not currently well enough incentivize the opening of small businesses. There are, however, burdensome snags throughout the entire business starting process. I mean, the permitting process is arduous. Just getting an alcohol license can take forever. So I want to know how you would leverage your position as city council president to streamline the alcohol licensing process, make the entire permitting process much more tolerable, palatable, and faster. And I will start with Mr. Shipman, because he is right next to me in my boxes.
Thanks, Sean. Yes, this is something that I have heard about. I have met with Korean small business owners. I've met with women, small business owners, individuals. I think that there are a couple of things. One, from a city council perspective, we have to make sure that we are not only adequately funding our processes, but also we're holding accountable the administration for outcomes. So I think that both from a committee work perspective on council, but also from a data perspective, we need very clear transparency and reporting out on how long processes are taken, how long certain licenses have been up, so that we can all know whether or not the process is working. And I think we also have to make sure that the technology behind the processes are working. There's been a lot, I've heard a lot from a lot of people, that process changes pre-COVID, and then, of course, the fallback when the offices were not open, that we were relying on fax technology and other kinds of outdated processes. We have to make sure that our technology makes sense. And finally, I'd say Chicago had a great idea. They did a hackathon for forms, where they actually brought people from the outside to simplify forms across all kinds of departments. And I think an idea like that could do a lot of good to just make sure that the forms that we use are quite simple and straightforward and not arduous for our small business owners.
Thank you. Councilwoman, we'll head to you.
Thank you. The question about the alcohol permitting process, you know, there's a pretty provocative idea that's circulating, and that is we go through the city approval process, and then you have to go to the state. Why not have one central approving authority? And so that would require us working with the state and city, working together to figure out that single entry point for alcohol licensing is a very provocative idea. It's one that we're bringing over to the Small Business Advisory Council, the vet, and to look at that. I think it's really important. The, keep harping on the Small Business Advisory Council because it pulls together, we've got folks from Emory, the Federal Reserve, we've got small business owners. It is a compendium of all the perspectives of those folks who are at the nitty gritty point. And so we're looking at the permitting process, and we can talk about, you know, new technology and systems, but there's some things that are fundamentally, just don't make sense and they're flawed. I want to also have that advisory body, a small business advisory body, talk to staff, because the staff who are in there have a lot of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Russell, you're up.
Well, I come to this from the perspective of having started a business here in Atlanta the last few years, and it's very cumbersome. I think more things need to be modernized. It needs to be placed online. There is a problem. We're trying to figure out, do you apply to the county, the city, or the state? Those things need to be clarified. I don't understand why you can't do most of this online, like other places I've been. When I was in the Army, I was also in charge of city services, and we put everything possible online so that people could do it online. And then there was a countdown calendar to when you could expect action to happen on your submission. We need to do that. And I think this also ties back to the budgeting process, that when the administrators come forward, they need to be held to a standard of what they're going to provide to citizens and in what timeline, to what standard. And then they're funded in such a way to accomplish that. That has not happened in the city council here in Atlanta, not just for this, but across the board. Licensing and permits is one of the things that business owners have complained to me about the most, whether it's construction, opening a new business, and oh, by the way, that cost us jobs, because until they can open their businesses, they cannot employ people.
Thank you. Mr. English, you're up.
Yeah, so I think a few things come to mind. Number one, we have to make sure that we provide, from a budget perspective, enough staffing for the permitting office, for the permitting process. I think we have to abandon what, the antiquated system, which really falls upon nepotism of the folks who get appointed to the alcohol license and review board. We need to make sure that those folks who are appointed are competent, who are appointed by their merits and who are there specifically to do a good job. I think we also need to get rid of the need for a mayoral signature at the end of it. A lot of times, folks go through this process, and then a lot of their permits end up sitting on the mayor's desk for whatever reason and for however long. We need to abandon that particular process as well, so folks can get their licensing and permits faster. I also think, you know, we need to ensure that we strengthen the council's ability to, again, track and monitor what happens from beginning to end of the permitting process. And so that's about data transparency. That's about ensuring that folks know that we are living up to what we say we will.
Thank you. All right, I'll yield to you, Mike.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. So we had a question that I think plays into where the conversation is going right now, since we sort of hit on sort of the processing and what it takes to get through sort of the connections that wealthier and folks with political connections have. So I wanted to kind of move us over to a question a little bit more specific about permitting. And that is, in, you know, 10 seconds or so, if you could just give me an answer on this, because I want to know, how long do you think individual candidates, how long do you think it takes a small business to navigate the city permitting process and open up in the Old Fourth Ward? So I'd like to get an estimate of what you think that timeline is. And then, if you don't mind, do you support and would you support an overhaul and an update of Chapter 10? And so two questions, quick answers, but how long do you think it takes a small business to open and to navigate the city permitting process to get a business open in the Old Fourth Ward? And do you support an updated overhaul to Chapter 10? And anyone who would like to go first, the floor is yours.
Well, I'll go. A Chapter 10 is
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in very quickly. Ms. Archibong, there's a reason why I would like for you to answer this one last.
Because I would tell you what Chapter 10 is, but okay.
That's exactly right. All right. I'd like to start with Mr. Russell, if you don't mind, and then we'll have Mr. Shipman, and then we'll have Mr. English and Ms. Archibong, and I'm gonna have you go last, Ms. Archibong. No disrespect, last but not least.
It depends on what you're doing. I know it's taken some folks up to six months just to get a permit to open. The liquor license takes even longer for some folks, based if they have anything negative in their background. So it varies from person to person, but I've commonly heard six months. Beauty shop, they actually got tired of waiting and just started doing what they needed to do before they actually got the permit back. I think we need to look at this from the perspective of a small business owner like myself, just trying to start, trying to get your feet off the ground. I know that some businesses hire expeditors to get their permits through, which I find absolutely ridiculous. I could not afford to hire an expediter to get my permits through the web down at City Hall. So I think those things need to be looked at carefully and looked at from the perspective of a entrepreneur who's new to the process, who cannot afford to hire a lawyer or an expediter to get their things done. And I think we need to revisit not only Title 10, but we also need to revisit everything that affects small businesses, including light taxes.
Thank you. And so would you support an overhaul or an update of Chapter 10?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shipman?
Sure. So my best estimate would be probably five or so months, depending on the circumstances for licensing. Chapter 10 is the alcohol licensing section of city code. Actually, when I was at the Woodruff, we had to update four licenses on the campus. So I had to go through that process, actually. And so I know how the process works. I would support an overhaul, at least a review and potentially an overhaul. I think we have to think very carefully about not only the process itself, but we've seen a lot of issues around alcohol licensing related to whether or not folks are, you know, actually a restaurant or such. We need to make sure that the code is one that makes sense for where we are right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. English.
Yes, I would support an overhaul or an update to Chapter 10 from a variety of perspectives. I think for good actors, we need to ensure that they have access to the permits and licensing that they need on time to open their business and operate their businesses efficiently. For bad actors, I think we need to actually explore whether or not they're functioning as a bar or a restaurant or a club or something in between, and we need to go after those folks who are not living up to code. Number three, I also believe that, again, we need to abandon, abandon, abandon the system that has in large part been based off of nepotism and political favors. I think the expediting process has become essentially a cottage industry where folks are making a lot of money trying to help network and weave themselves through the city's cumbersome processes. And so we need to make it easier for small businesses who are good actors to do business. We need to make it harder for folks who are bad actors to continue to do business in the city.
Thank you. And that leaves Ms. Archibong. Sounds like they stole your thunder, but I'm gonna let you go right ahead with the Chapter 10.
Hey, that's fine. I Googled it while Mr. Russell was talking. It took me a few minutes to figure out.
Think about the Googling part of the Zoom thing.
I knew, I knew what it was, but I thought smart people here would use that time to look it up. So the length of time it takes to get a business license in Atlanta is way too long, not only for the license for the business operator, but if you have to renovate your space, God forbid, your plumber or your electrician needs to pull a permit. Guess what? If their business licenses are renewed, they can't pull a permit. Why did the city change the system for business license renewal in the middle of a pandemic when staff wasn't present? So that is a cluster F, and we use that language around here. Relative to Chapter 10, we've had a lot of council-driven technical advisory groups to address alcohol. Those technical advisory groups have not met. They have been set up. People have been appointed. Nothing has happened. I think this is the sweet spot for the council to get in there and to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sean?
All right. Before we move on to this next one, I just want to do another quick rapid fire one, like less than five seconds an answer. How long in an ideal world could it take to start a business? We'll start with Mr. English.
Ooh, I would say within the space of a month to get through the city's processes. You know, obviously, there are other factors that play into that, but you should be able to start and end city's processes within 30 business days.
All right, Mr. Russell?
I did it in Florida, and 30 days is about right to get through the processes and get your licensing back from those entities of government.
Councilwoman?
I'd say a 30 to 60 day range.
Mr. Shipman?
I agree, 30 to 60 days, depending on exactly the complexity.
Okay, moving on. This one's a bit of a tricky one because of some of the roadblocks under the Gold Dome right now. I'll talk to you a bit about COVID prevention or the spread of COVID and preventing that. So would you or could you support in any way staff or customer vaccine mandate or mask mandate at small businesses? I don't know if that has to come in the form of incentives or if, you know, obviously, part of your role as a city official would be working in tandem with the State House to try to enact policies that affect Atlanta. So the long and short of it is, how do you protect small businesses from the spread of COVID? Let's start with Councilwoman.
I think it's important to, if we have that mandate, which frankly, personally, I think is important. It's sort of like we don't have polio anymore. How did that happen, right? And so, but we can't put the burden just on the small business. That small business needs to have the support of the government to implement it. So if it is one to be a mandate that everyone be vaccinated and or tested, then the resources for that need to be provided, time off from work to go and get vaccinated or tested. Anything that will be a burden financially on the business needs to be supported by the government through federal funds that then get passed through the state down to the business owners. And we need to do it in real time. It doesn't need to be bottlenecked. When we look at how the CARES Act dollars and the American Rescue Plan dollars have been deployed, it's been bureaucratically tied up in red tape and paperwork. This needs to be fast-tracked. Money needs to be put in your number of employees, and you get your money to pay for the lost time, the burden on the business.
Thank you. Mr. Shipman?
So I think that you rightly pointed out, it's difficult for the city in this environment, given some of the state edicts. I think it's also, we have to be very careful. If the city were to do something, it actually might put a burden on our small business in the city where the suburbs might not be doing it. And so you don't want to create a situation where you're trying to protect people, but in fact, because it's not actually broad enough, it's not effective. So I actually would think that we would do a couple of things. One is, I think that we would, if businesses were going in that direction, we would absolutely support them from a city perspective, both with kind of publicity support, but also if there's ways in which the city can directly support those businesses from a purchasing perspective or participation perspective. I think Councilmember Archibong is right. There had been far too many instances where federal funding has landed at the state, at the city, at the county, and has not gotten out into the field. And so I think that we have to be in better coordination with the county and the state on the funding, and we also have to have a real burden to getting money out to small businesses so that they can purchase the things they need to keep their folks safe and to keep their folks vaccinated and to basically be able to survive until COVID passes.
Thank you. Mr. English?
I think we have to ensure that our small businesses have access to the resources and capital they need to back up whatever city, state, and or federal mandates exist. Also, I think we have to do a better job of ensuring that the resources that have been provided actually gets to the hands of the folks who need help the most faster. And so that means money for capital, that means money for renovations, that means money for folks who are maybe work for a small business and or were laid off or had a cutback in hours and are now facing eviction. And so we know that we've had a number of problems getting those funds that have been earmarked for pandemic prevention and or remediation, getting it to the hands of the folks who need help the most. And so we've got to streamline a number of processes to make sure folks have access to the capital they need to be successful.
Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Well, first, I think there needs to be one rule for everybody, not just one rule for big boxes, stores that allow Well, first, I think there needs to be one rule for everybody, not just one rule for big boxes, uh, stores that allow to still open. A small business have to close. There has to be one rule for everybody. The second thing is we need to follow the science. This issue has become far too politicized and people have drawn lines based on their political background. Um, I recently was in Europe because we had a, a death in the family. And what I saw there, having also lived there, is that different companies have taken different approaches and they all have about the same result. Uh, Northern Europe, there are no mandates, there are no ma- almost no mandates at all, and their COVID rates are no worse than anybody else's. I think we really need to follow the science on this, which has been very difficult because the, the information keeps changing. But there needs to be one rule for everybody. And if the government does require a mandate, then those business owners need to be compensated for that. You can't have one without the other. I think we really need to look at this at a, as a practical matter, not as a political matter. And again, follow the science with one rule for everybody.
Thank you. All right, Mike Jordan, you're up.
Thank you, thank you. And I guess, yeah, Mike, uh, we might. Who, who, Mike and, and Mike R., Mike J., whatever. Um, so, uh, often the city, uh, seems at least to be solely focused on supporting and listening to the large corporate businesses out there as opposed to the importance of the legacy and the minority-owned and independent businesses. Um, and oftentimes, those are the businesses that create a sense of community in the city, as we know. So these same businesses are constantly caught up in red tape, as we've heard, as we've already been discussing here. Um, city permitting processes, again, keeping businesses running and potentially expanding seems to be somewhat slow to stagnated because of this red tape. So I'd like to get some specifics on why these systems are continuing to fail and what significant steps, so again, what significant steps do you offer that would correct this issue? Who would like to go first on that question? Mr. Shipman?
I'm, I'm happy to go. You know, I had a, I had a roundtable with, um, some female, um, small business owners and they were basically sharing with me that a lot of their payables take a hundred and eighty days or more to get paid from the city. That is absolutely a death knell for a small business, as we know. So I think that when we, when it comes to the payables, we've got to do from a council perspective, a thorough review of the process. We have to invest if necessary in making sure that the whole payables process is much smoother because that alone would unlock an enormous amount of potential. Two, when we were building the, the Center for Civil and Human Rights downtown, one thing that we did to increase MWBE participation, we actually had thirty-nine percent on that project, which is far beyond the city's, um, requirements, was we actually, a year or two in advance, would showcase an RFP that we would be putting out and the kinds of qualifications we'd be looking for, giving small businesses a chance to build up their, um, sort of array of past projects so they would be ready. So we actually were seeding our own pipeline so that when the RFPs went out, it wasn't just, hey, we shared it with everybody, but actually MWBE businesses were very prepared in order to succeed. And so I think that's a tangible step. It's not just putting out an RFP, but it's actually as much as, and as far in advance, showcasing the kinds of skills and the kinds of attributes we'll be looking for, which then allow MWBE participants to really, um, participate at a much greater level.
Thank you. And, uh, one request, uh, whenever we're bringing up initialisms or acronyms, can you also please make sure that you clarify that for anyone who may not be?
Sure. Minority and women-owned, uh, business enterprise MWBE.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shipman. All right, um, who would like to take that question next?
I wanted to hear the noise because he went over his time, but okay.
I thought we recorded you here. What happened?
I just wanna hear it. The suspense is killing me.
Mixtape horns in a moment. We wanna wait till the end to get the party really going, but we'll have the.
But if, if y'all get to one thirty, you're gonna hear a real. Okay. Okay. Uh, I'll go, um, next. Um, you know, I am concerned about a thing that I'm hearing a lot and I've heard it for years, and that is a sense that the concerns, and we can roll off and tick off all the concerns that the small businesses have experienced through permitting or as Mr. Shipman pointed out, the delays in being compensated for services rendered. Uh, but what I'm hearing that disturbs me the most is this sense that if you really speak up, if you really speak truth to power, there's a penalty phase for that. That troubles me because all of you who, who know me, uh, know that I have the courage to lead with directness and to challenge assumptions, right? And so I want to have a, a possibility around establishing that pathway for real concerns and real complaints to be shared with the mayor in particular. Because as we know, the mayor will pick the leaders of these departments. When the council does the check and the balance, it's way too late. And, and spoiler alert, I'm gonna go to thirty seconds over. And so we need to unpack, uncouple that connection between, if you report something, if you share the truth with those who have authority to change, that there's real results that happen from that. Our mayor needs to get that. December first, I'm meeting with the new mayor and talking about these issues and we need a path forward that really. That's not horrible. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have to find out, huh?
Yeah, well.
Uh, Mr. English, looks like you're ready, unmuted?
Yeah, can you actually repeat the question?
Not a problem at all. So, uh, the question is, we'll get to the meat of it. Why do systems continue to fail small and local businesses in the permitting process? And do you have significant steps that you want to take and will take to correct this?
Yeah, I think by and large, we have a system in place, a, a system of government in place that favors large corporations, that favors big businesses and frankly makes it, uh, goes out of its way, um, uh, to favor those corporations in terms of processes, permitting, tax abatements, tax incentives and everything in between. I think that system needs, needs to be blown up and flipped on its head. I think Atlanta works better, uh, works best, actually, when we're supporting folks from the ground up. And so, uh, we need to ensure that our small businesses have access to capital. We need to ensure that, uh, they have access to experts, uh, who lead and guide and are able to shepherd them through, uh, the permitting process, the funding process and everyone, uh, and, and, and everything, uh, in between. And so right now, we just literally, Atlanta is not built in a way that really cares and demonstrates a sense of compassion, uh, or a sense of urgency around, uh, supporting small businesses. And that needs to change.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Russell?
What I found trying to start my small business is that it's very cumbersome. There seems to be a good old boy network. Um, as I've talked to small business owners, I met with a group of black business owners, I met with a group of Hispanic business owners who feel like, particularly the Spanish, uh, business owners feel like they've been cut out of the process, including the, the contracting process because the way the law is written now, very, as Hispanics are not considered my disadvantaged minorities, which is absolutely ridiculous. I think the system needs to be completely changed. Um, I felt this personally. Um, I think there's a lot of corruption and cronyism in the system and it needs to be completely revised. And I would advocate, starting with the, uh, contracting system, that it needs to be outsourced to a third party that is neutral, that has no vested interest in it, because a lot of our small businesses are being cut out of the system because they're not in the good old boy network and they cannot get funding, they cannot be, uh, contractors, uh, particularly at the airport. So, uh, this has to be revamped and other cities have done this. Florida is a prime example of how you streamline government, you put it online, you make it transparent and people can get their permits and get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. All right, Sean, uh, I believe we're going back to you now.
Excuse me. So one of your roles.
Did everyone get that question, Mr. Shipman? Did you answer? I'm, I'm looking now and I'm like, okay, I think everyone did.
I did.
Okay, great. You had a look that I was like, oh, oh, wait a minute, let me, let me make sure of the eyebrows. Zoom gives you a lot of opportunity to get the wrong message when you misread eyebrow, so. Thank you. Sorry about that. Go right ahead.
All right, so, um, one of your roles as City Council President is to make committee appointments. So I wanna know, what are the characteristics of a council member who's best suited to support small businesses? And how are the various committees equipped to help break down some of the barriers that make it difficult to start and run these businesses? We'll start with Mr. English.
Yeah, look, I think it would, I think my general thought around, uh, committee appointments is this. One, we need to appoint folks, uh, who, uh, act with urgency, who are curious-minded, um, who have a clear sense of direction and purpose, who are, uh, who operate transparently. More specific, uh, to the small business question, it would be great to have a small business, uh, owner, uh, in, uh, uh, the role uh, as it relates to, uh, what needs to happen around small businesses. Um, I think that, uh, this is an issue that we generally have to break away from this large system that favors, again, big businesses, corporations and this, who you know, nepotism favored, um, system. And I think that's how Atlanta has been functioning. If you're able to pick up the phone and make significant contributions to elected officials or make significant contributions, um, uh, to, uh, the mayor's coffers or council members' coffers, uh, you get issues handled faster. That's quite frankly broken, wrong and needs to be turned on its head.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. So one of your roles as City Council President is to make committee appointments. I want you to tell me what you see as the necessary characteristics of a council member who's looking to support small businesses. And I wanna know how those various committees can help break down some of the barriers that make it difficult to start and run these businesses.
Well, there's two things that I look for in hiring, promoting of everybody, and that is character and merit. Um, do they have the character? Are they honest? Are they decent people? Do they have integrity? And do they have the merit? Are they qualified for the job? Do they know what they're doing? And that applies, and I've done that throughout my entire life. Does a person that's Dr. King said have character and the merit of their abilities and actions? I think it's very important that we pick the right people to head these committees. Um, I think you need to look to make sure there are no, um, competing interests, like we said before, with the donations from certain, uh, sectors. Um, I have not received any money from any of these, uh, big contractors. I have, I owe them nothing. And, uh, what I've seen in the past is that, um, a lot of the people on these committees have not taken their jobs seriously and I, without being mean or anything, um, I've watched these committees and it's, it's been very disturbing how they did not do their jobs. And I will be on top of that as City Council.
There it is. Councilwoman, you're up.
Okay. You know, when you think about small businesses and you think about the committee, um, layout at City Council, there are six committees that touch small businesses. When you wanna open your business, you need to look at zoning. You know, is the zoning supporting the kind of business that you want to run? You open your business and you're concerned about public safety, then you wanna make sure the public safety committee is engaged. You wanna know about the sidewalks or you want to, uh, talk about street condition. Now we've got transportation committee involved. You wanna talk about the permitting process, licensing. Now you've got community development, human services. And then if you wanna talk about systems, we've got finance exec committee, which is about allocation of dollars and how all these things sort of pull together under the executive branch. That tells me that every committee is important. The only committee I left out was committee on council and that sort of reference how the council operates. And so all of the committees, with that exception that I just said, uh, would involve council members who are interested in being part of helping our small businesses. It is my belief that. Oh, that's not fair, Adam. Okay.
Right, uh, I think you're up, Mr. Shipman.
Sure, I think, I think when it comes to small businesses specifically, you want council chairs who are gonna go out, who are gonna spend a lot of time outside of City Hall in the community, talking to small, small business owners, walking neighborhoods, understanding specifically the impact of policy. And you want folks that are very process and detail oriented. And specifically, I think there are two committees, uh, Council, uh, Member Archibong is right, there are a lot that touch, but there are really two, right? One is utilities, because if the front of your small business is not well taken care of, it's a problem. I've heard from a lot of small business owners about the frontage fees and the huge increase and the real lack of services. That's a very detailed thing that has enormous impact on small business. You want a committee chair that's really focused there. And then, of course, community development. I think that, that you want a committee, uh, chair there that really is thinking about how we're developing neighborhoods that really support small businesses. So I would be looking, it'd be great if it was a small business owner, but I'm looking for detail-oriented and somebody who's willing to go out and talk and bring back information from the community all the time.
Thank you. Um, all right, I've got another one that kind of touches on, uh, some of the roadblocks presented by the State House, uh, specifically about wages, but a lot of the small, local businesses that we deal with pay higher wages and, uh, provide better work environments than the larger businesses. But as housing costs rise in, in town Atlanta, especially in places like the old Fourth Ward and the, the districts that, uh, this committee who put on this forum is representing, many people aren't able to afford to live in the communities that they serve anymore. So I wanna know what can be done, what must be done to ensure that service workers can afford to live in those specific communities. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Russell.
Well, actually, I'm working on that right now as a private citizen with some residents up in, um, of all places, um, Garden Hills, where there's a community there that's being ripped apart by a developer. There are folks that live in those houses that are, um, in the service industry, schoolteachers, administrators. Um, there's a lady who has been there since nineteen eighty-five that's being forced out of her home because of the zoning laws and the new zoning law does nothing to protect her. In fact, it makes the situation worse. We've got to get down to the details of our zoning laws and permitting and start what I call building, uh, purpose-built communities so that people can live, work and play in the same area in a walkable space like they've done in Europe. We have done a terrible job of protecting our tree canopy, our green spaces, affordable homes, all at the same time because we've given carte blanche to these developers. We can and must do better when it comes to protecting our legacy residents and affordable housing. Um, it's, it's just, uh, beyond the pale what's happening in our city.
You've mentioned, uh, the new zoning laws. Are you referring to Councilman Faroki's proposals?
Yes. Um, I find those, you know, one, the city said they were not gonna do that, that they were just gonna do the minimum required by law to change, uh, the, to update the zoning law. And instead, we've got this six-hundred-page bill. Uh, there was no community involvement. Uh, folks I've talked to from as far south as, uh, um, Adamsville and places like that, uh, calling Heights, all the way up to Buckhead are totally opposed to this bill because it is just gonna re, uh, uh, do our city without their input. And we need to slow down, pump our brakes and do this with community engagement. And it doesn't need to be a sledgehammer. It needs to be done very carefully, community by community. Um, it, it does nothing to protect our tree canopy, does nothing to protect single-family homes or legacy residents. I, I'm wholly opposed to it.
All right, uh, let's go to Mr. English, and, um, I think it's appropriate to, uh, expand the, uh, the time for this one.
You mean the question? The original question again?
Original question, uh, revolves around how service workers in these fast gentrifying communities can't afford to live in them anymore. So initially, it was a question about what can or must be done so that these people can afford to live in town. But I also, I guess I wanted to expand it now to touch on, uh, zoning reform. If you, I mean, take it in whatever direction you want.
No, certainly. I think, I think a few things have to happen. Uh, affordable housing is a space I work in on a daily basis. Uh, you know, our organization has worked to create affordable housing, uh, throughout Metro Atlanta that, uh, serves folks uh, making anywhere between thirty thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars a year. I think number one, the city needs a dedicated stream of revenue for affordable housing. Number two, I think the city absolutely has to start turning dirt on the land that apps, that it actually owns. We have a housing authority that, uh, is not in the habit of building affordable housing, candidly. Uh, and for the better part of a decade, uh, they haven't turned any dirt, uh, and that's absolutely, uh, unacceptable. Uh, number three, I think we need to, uh, uh, explore, uh, a process like I had the opportunity to leave when I was chairman of the school board of using city property, um, uh, and turning that property into affordable housing units. Uh, we converted vacant school buildings into affordable housing units that benefited folks, uh, throughout the city. As it relates to zoning, zoning is one of the biggest levers we have to, uh, improve affordability throughout the city. I believe the original city de- design plan, uh, outlined what was called, uh, conservation areas and then growth areas. And in those growth areas, uh, what you find is a lots of opportunity, uh, to create density, uh, to create, um, additional growth, uh, in those areas. Um, if you drive down Campbellton Road, if you drive down Metropolitan, um, Parkway and a number of other areas. And a number of other areas, uh those areas are ripe for development where density will actually be a good thing. And so we do need to do that in a way that. Uh includes a community uh conversation that includes community voice. Uh we have to do things with people and not to people. And so I I'm in favor of leveraging our zoning uh laws and ordinances to to encourage density and affordability. We just have to ensure. That we do it in a way that includes community voice.
Thank you. Um Councilwoman, we're talking about wage stagnation, housing affordability, zoning and density. I don't think you and I have talked about Amir's legislation, so just. Okay.
Talked about the last time I saw you, but it's not that. So I'm the only one here who will get an opportunity if this does come before council for a final vote, but I want to flip it a little bit. I've had a lot of conversations, as you can imagine, about this, and one question that really struck me was. What would I do differently as council president if this possibility came and I was the president? Around introducing this legislation. And what I said was this, and this will be instructive for everybody else who's running. I'm Amir is a uh this is his first term. He's chair of zoning. The commissioner may have said, hi, chair, would you introduce this legislation? I want the council members to know that they are empowered to say, no. This has not been properly vetted. I recommend you do X, Y, and Z first, then once that has happened, then let's talk about whether or not I introduce it. We do have the ability to say no. And as a chair, the administration already knows, don't bring me unvetted legislation. I'm not going to introduce it. And so we have an opportunity as leaders to change that. So I'm not going to weigh in on the zoning. I will tell you, there's a lot of consternation about it. And I'm concerned as well, but I will not give my opinion because I will possibly be voting, and I don't give my opinion before I hear from all the constituents. And this has gone out to all the NPUs. I respect the voice of the people and saying what I think prior to that, I think is disingenuous because it's not my brand. Relative to affordability and uh folks who serve and work in our communities but cannot afford to live there, it's a freaking tragedy. You've got to do better. A provocative idea that is being, my time is up already? I like the idea of helping businesses getting together. Helping to find housing opportunities for their staff and for their employees so that they don't have transportation costs and undue delays. We need to incentivize our businesses to work together to deal with this affordability crisis for their workers. Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Shitman. Housing, zoning, wages.
Let me answer your question specifically. I think let's take fourth ward. We have a lot of legacy property properties in fourth ward. We have, we need to do a better job of making sure those legacy properties remain and that we remain affordable. So we need better incentives for older properties to be rehabbed and to remain affordable. We need to use land trust models where basically either the public or the public-private partnerships come in and buy the property. And then allow them to remain affordable as rental properties. Because a lot of the folks that support as workers are small businesses are renters, and we need to make sure that in a place like fourth ward, we still have affordable. Rentable properties. I think that transit on the Belt Line is a huge affordability piece. Not only is it something that's been promised to be done, but if we have transit on the Belt Line, it will create more affordability. And it will create more access for our small businesses that are near the Belt Line for folks to get to. So I think that's a key transit priority that has to do with affordability. On the zoning perspective, I think that that what Amir has introduced is not yet ready. I think that it's too blunt of an instrument. I do think that uh uh more flexibility around parking requirements makes a lot of sense. I do think that ADUs make sense, especially in a place like fourth ward uh and other in-town neighborhoods. I don't think we should deed them separately. Um but I do think more flexibility to build them, and I think that we should look at more uh density around transit areas. But I think the way the legislation is written right now, it is too blunt of an instrument. I think we need to to go back and go through a much more thorough process.
Understand when it's quiet and when it's loud.
Tried to get you. He tried you, Joe.
I'm sorry, yeah, I think it's just uh zoom, zoom decides.
I stopped. I stopped.
We're not passing judgment.
Alright, Mr. Jordan.
Yes, so we're gonna uh go in just a bit of a, you know, pivot, but similar vein. And what we're going to ask now is um thinking about this in the commercial space area. So um what are the policies that you would implement and that you would like to see propped up that you would actually lead on? Um to help sure, ensure entrepreneurs and local business owners are able to afford. Commercial space even in the fastest growing neighborhoods such as the old fourth ward. So how do we get that done? Um who's who's ready for the commercial space question? Madeline, you look like you're, yeah, there we go.
Alright, so I was on the Invest Atlanta Board for three years, and we did a lot around the affordability in the housing space. I consistently, and I still am uh interested in leading this on the council as president, and that is. Commercial affordability. We need to make sure that the resilience of our small businesses, our legacy businesses are supported. I had a situation in uh East Atlanta, long-term um hairdresser, uh her rent tripled. When the lease renewal term happened, and she is now an unincorporated decap. We did not have anything in our toolbox box to deal with that situation. We need to deal with the landlords, the property owners. And we need to make sure that we have everything that we need to, one, keep those rents at the affordability rate. Prepare businesses for knowing what their rights are and what negotiating skills that they can have. And then we need to make sure that our policies are such that we can support those businesses and those landlords who don't have to increase their rights. Because of increasing costs and burdens that have been put on them by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Tried to get you. Uh Mr. English, thank you for raising your hand. Uh please jump in on this question.
Yeah, well, number one, I think we need to uh play, ensure that we're playing by the same set of rules uh at all times. And that our business owners understand what those rules are and that we don't move the goalposts on them uh mid-process. Uh number two, I think when the city enacts uh uh broad sweeping change, I think we all, we have to have a inadequate feedback loop. That incorporates the feedback from uh from our businesses on how our policies are actually impacting them. Uh what comes to mind is when you close out Edgewood Avenue, for example, good idea, uh poor execution. And so when you talk to folks who are uh uh operating uh along Edgewood, the Edgewood corridor, they will tell you that uh it's actually hurting their businesses. For them to be uh for the street to be closed down for such a long period of time. Number three, I think a a big bucket issue is I think the city has to get into business of actually guaranteeing loans uh for small businesses. Uh that have high growth potential. And so when we do that, we provide them access to capital to grow their businesses, employ more folks. Uh and 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 that will help them in tremendously uh in their ability uh to help grow our economy.
Thank you very much, Mr. English. Um Mr. Russell, would you like to jump in there or Mr. Shitman? We'll go with whoever can get off mute first.
I'm happy to go. Sure. Um when I was at uh the Woodruff Arts Center, uh I worked with the Midtown Alliance and some of the. Um uh commercial property owners to actually create a program in which artists and arts orgs were given. Um low or no cost frontage uh retail space. Uh it was good for the community because there was not a lot of small arts and culture um companies and organizations in Midtown. And it was good for the landlords because it actually created activity where the commercial market wasn't necessarily responding. I think that those kinds of programs can be done. I think if you put uh economic incentives and tie it to those kinds of of offerings. So that if you do give economic incentives, they have to create space in the long term for small businesses. I think that that makes a lot of sense. We've seen in other cities that philanthropic organizations actually are the ones that are that are also underwriting small business loans. Uh and guaranteeing those using their capital. I think that's a a huge capital base that could be tapped. And I think that we also need to do this not only in high-growth areas, but in neglected neighborhoods. We need to be supporting commercial space in those neighborhoods too.
Thank you for that answer. Uh Mr. Russell.
So this goes back, uh there's a lot of issues and this is very complicated, but one of the main issues, it goes back to zoning and what kind of city we want to become. And I think if we start focusing on purpose-built communities, working with those communities to turn them around so that we zone in such a way. That you have retail, commercial, residential spaces in those blighted areas. In ways that people can afford both the the housing and the commercial space. And then we give incentives specifically for those areas, not just a big broad brush, but specifically for those areas like in Grove Park where I just bought my house. So that we can turn those communities around. We keep talking about this. We have all these theories. I want to see something practical on the ground. I've seen this done before. We can do that again here in Atlanta. But it takes a lot of detailed planning and work, and it has to be community by community based. So that we don't try to make the city look and feel all the same, because what works in Buckhead will not work in Bankhead. And and as a small business owner, I know that too many times you get lost because you're the small, the small fish in the big pond.
Thank you very much. Uh some people would say Buck, Bankhead is the new Buckhead, but uh you know, that's uh we'll see how that works out. Would you like to jump back in over here, Sean? I believe we got everybody on that.
Yeah, um so we're staying on a similar path with this. Uh and obviously, the word gentrification has many tentacles. Um there are socioeconomic implications, racial implications, cultural implications. I want to know what you've seen during your time in Atlanta, during your time on the campaign trail. What are the trends among small businesses that? Uh how have small businesses been impacted in your perspective by the forces of gentrification as the cities become bigger and better and more expensive? And how can you wrangle those forces to ensure that Atlanta isn't one day just littered with artisan pickle shops and twenty-five dollar hamburger joints?
First of all, I really like artisan pickles, so I don't know if anybody else is offended by that, but I'm not running.
Mr. Shitman.
So so first of all, I think we've got to, we've got to have an absolute non-negotiable, that every neighborhood in this city ought to have adequate sidewalks. Adequate lighting, access to a park, the basic foundations that make living there and starting a small business there and running a small business viable. And we shouldn't equate basic services with it's either gentrified or not gentrified. So that's the first thing that I hear, is that a lot of neighborhoods say, look, we need some of the basics done much, much better. And then second, I think part of it is uh an uh a lack of imagination. We can't be satisfied that. You know, a Starbucks is the only way to think that we've got a successful neighborhood. So that means as you work back in the process. We've got to do a lot of the things we've talked about. We've got to make it a huge priority to give technical assistance, to give money. To give access and to give a smooth process to those, especially local residents, especially local residents that want to open up a business in their neighborhood. Because economic studies have shown us that if local ownership is maintained, then you actually have the entire neighborhood benefiting, not just the business owner.
Thank you. Um and I'm not actually aware of any artisan pickle shops in town, but I'm, I would gamble if there's at least one at Ponce City Market.
There is one. There is one, Ponce City Market.
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm pretty sure there is one.
Okay, well.
Our sponsor, Ponce City Market.
Emma with the save.
Um, Mr. English, how about you?
Look, I think um we need to do everything in our power uh as fast as humanly possible to increase affordability uh throughout our city. I think we have to protect long-term residents. I think we have to increase uh community voice. Uh I think we need binding uh community benefits agreements for businesses that are large corporations or businesses that are moving into. Um our areas so that uh that community voice actually translates to a real community benefit. Um for the folks who've been there um the longest. Um I also believe that, you know, it's a terrible thing um to feel like a stranger in your own home. And so I think, you know, when we look at our neighborhood associations and our NPU processes, for the businesses that want to move into an area, we have to find a way. To actually in- include community voice in the kinds of operations or businesses that are moving into um a particular area. Um and and when we do that, what we find is that we protect the character of the neighborhood and also end up uh protecting the long-term. Uh long-term residents who've been there before. We've got to make sure that those folks uh benefit from the growth that our city is experiencing.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
I hate to do this, Sean, but repeat the question.
How do you wrangle the forces of gentrification? I mean, let me back up, uh because I know that's a really big ask. Business, small businesses are arguably impacted by gentrification, no matter how you define that word, um nearly as much as residents. So I want to know what you will do to, I guess, keep those forces in check. And I said so that we don't have a bunch of artisan pickle shops and twenty-five dollar hamburger joints, but um I guess that's just. My imagination of uh what gentrification means. So yeah, open-ended question.
Yeah, you know, um I have the pleasure of representing East Atlanta, Kirkwood, parts of Old Fourth Ward. And so the small business, the neighborhood commercials are the lifeblood of the district that I represent. I think we have lessons learned that are scalable. The business associations are very entwined with the community associations, and I think that is the pathway. It needs to be replicated across the city. When Emma has a meeting, she's talking to Devon, I know who's fourth insane and on and on. And I know the East Atlanta Business Association is a component part of the East Atlanta Community Association, so that we can grow together, so that we can. We don't want any um artisan pickle shops. We don't want national brands is is what I hear from the constituents that I've been representing. They want the mom and pop. They want the new. They want the craft beer. Uh and they want to make sure that there is um a cadence together with community. I think that's important, and I think we need to strengthen those kinds of relationships and make it easier for those entrepreneurs who want to get started in a community. To have the funding support that they need and the technical support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Think this goes back to what is our vision for Atlanta? Do we just want a bigger city or do we want a better city? Do we want a more livable city? And just density and a bunch of street cars does not make a better city. And this needs to be very detailed planning that's done community by community. So that we can protect our legacy residents, that we preserve what is unique and great about Atlanta, like our tree canopy. And we can't do that with a one-size-fits-all zoning law or bills. It has to be done community by community. And we need to do it in such a way that actually promotes these things that we're talking about, because that is not the case right now here in Atlanta. We keep talking about these things, but it never happens. And so what I want to do is bring a new voice with new leadership, with new direction to say, we are going to be a better city for everybody. And it's going to take a lot of detailed planning. This is not going to be done in three easy steps. But it has to be done if we're going to accomplish these ideas that everybody's talked about forever and a day and never happen, starting with gentrification. Uh so, yes.
Thank you. Alright, Mike Jordan, floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to shout out to uh Do South Pickles, which is an excellent local pickle brand. Um I would like to point out that uh Mr. Archibong, you'd actually said partisan pickle shops, and we're getting into a whole other. We definitely don't need any partisan.
No, we don't. Will you stop listening so carefully?
Right, look, we're just, we're trying to keep them, everybody needs to get along. Now, um talking about uh some, you know, craft beer and all these other things open, but what about nightlife? And obviously, anyone here who's familiar with butter ATL, we talk about nightlife. I've covered nightlife for a long time in Atlanta. Uh just turned forty-four yesterday, so my nightlife looks a lot more like pillow time than, you know, what used to happen in the crunk days, but uh. Nightlife businesses and arts organizations, of course, they generate a great amount of revenue. They attract tourism, they attract convention business. They are critical. To the identity of the city, the cultural identity of Atlanta. We know that. People come here, they turn up, as the kids say. Um but there are only two departments, the APD and the Fire Department. They're the only two who are available to support these businesses during their peak hours. What steps, what steps will you take to provide more resources and support to the nighttime economy? And ensure that these businesses are seen and treated as an asset to the city instead of a liability? Happy to repeat the question, or if anyone wants to run up in there and uh, you know, no cap it, as the kids say, you know, turn up. You know, get lit, almost done with get lit, but we could still do that today. Sunday's coming. We can get lit Saturday.
I'm happy to jump in.
Thank you, Mr. English.
Yeah, look, uh Atlanta's culture is probably our uh biggest export. Uh and uh it's incredibly important to uh ensure that we protect that culture. And I think generally, we need to ensure that we are able to support uh good actors, folks who are uh acting in accordance with our laws, ordinances. Ordinances and so forth. Uh I think we need to make it easier to go after bad actors. So folks who are 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 not aligned with um uh those same laws and ordinances uh who are operating uh clubs. Uh who are operating restaurants that are actually functioning as pubs, and they're actually presenting nuisances to our neighborhoods. I think we need a nighttime mayor, actually, uh an idea that DC has. Um where, you know, twenty-four hours a day or after five, if you will, there's somebody you can pick up the phone and call and get access uh to the. There's somebody you can pick up the phone and call and get access uh, to the kinds of support that you need. Uh, that exists beyond the normal business operations of the city. And so. Uh, that nighttime mayor concept is, is a concept that we've seen work across the country. Uh, where our small businesses, again, who are good actors, have access to the kinds of resources, the kinds of help and the kinds of support they need. And it also makes it easier to go after those bad actors who make it hard on neighborhoods, uh, on communities and or uh, the good actors who are trying to live. Uh, uh, who are trying to provide a good time and a safe way for folks throughout the city.
Thank you. Yeah, Nicolas Cage, Bad Actors. I mean, he's not Atlantic, but we'll get into that another time. Uh, Ms. Archibong, would you like to step in here?
Well, I know that, um, you mentioned the two departments that are twenty-four seven. The other uh. Department that I would like to see, and I've asked for this, and occasionally they do it, is zoning enforcement. You know, we have a lot of complaints in O Fourth Ward about folks with out licenses, selling food and trinkets. And so it hurts those businesses that have gone through the process correctly. So I would like to have more staffing in the area. Of zoning enforcement to supplement the uh, APD efforts and I guess fire would just be in the event of an emergency EMT needs, but police cannot do it. Alone. And um, prior to the nightlife, I would like for the Department of Transportation, who uh, is responsible for our streets and sidewalks. And our planning departments to work with our law enforcement professionals and uh, zoning professionals to make sure that we have maximized. The ways that we have laid out our businesses and have kept our businesses uh, safe and resilient. And so there are just a lot of moving pieces, but it's the zoning enforcement piece should be more twenty-four hour than it is right now.
Thank you for that. Mr. Russell, would you like to step in?
Well, I've talked to a lot of uh, folks about this, residents who are very upset about how things are happening in our city. Up with the bad actors, because right now, uh, folks who violate the zoning laws. Um, they, they just stay open and uh, they're not worried about it because they know that's going to be several months to a year before they go to court and they continue to make money. The other problem here is the uh, liquor licensing, uh, uh, the licensee review board. Um, I see that process is very broken and dysfunctional, and that needs to change. We need to enforce the zoning laws and others. Um, for the bad actors, and we need to educate these uh, nighttime business owners as to what they can do to be better neighbors in their neighborhood. To relieve some of the tension between them and the residents around them. Uh, I don't think anybody wants to shut down the nightlife. But it has to be a balance between following the rules. And respecting the neighbor and the neighborhoods around you so that this is not a, a, a one-sided deal, which a lot of people in a lot of neighborhoods feel like it is now. I also know as a former cop that this is where a lot of our uh, violence and um, criminal behavior. Eminates from these clubs. And again, I think this is a case where we need to bring in the uh, business owners and educate them on how to be better neighbors.
Thank you for that, Mr. Russell, and Mr. Shipman.
Well, Mike, I appreciate you, you linking nightlife and arts and culture. I think that's exactly right. Um, and I think. First, we know that we underfund our arts and culture uh, sectors. Um, we support it in the two to three million dollar range. A city our size ought to support in the ten to fifteen million dollar range. This is something that I want to. Gather a consensus around, so we have much more public funding for arts and culture, because I think then it will drive not only more tourism, but it drives folks when they go to an arts and culture event. It usually ends around ten, and then what do they do? They usually go further into nightlife. Second, I think it's key that we actually have enough officers on the police department. One of the things we've seen is, is we have had a. A uh, shortfall in the number of officers. We don't have off-duty officers available, which makes it difficult for our nightlife to actually. You know, um, maintain their own businesses. And I also would want to expand PAT. I think that making our city feel like a place you want to walk around in is good, and I think that we know that PAT only. Uh, does not go overnight right now. It only goes during the day. Finally, I'd say, uh, we've seen some innovations like open container districts. I think we should continue to look at those. It changes the way that Atlanta operates, I think, potentially in a good way.
Definitely will change the way it would operate around uh, some places I like to go. Uh, can you uh, and clarify PAT for anyone who may not be familiar?
Thanks. Uh, policing alternatives. So this is when you uh, call. Um, the city and actually someone comes out, we've seen this a lot around homelessness issues, uh, for those who are unsheltered. A response from a servant, uh, from a social worker who uh, tries to um, uh, serve the person who's in need. It's a police alternative.
Thank you.
Pre-arrest diversion, pre-arrest diversion is what it stands for.
Sorry, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
All right, I think I'm up. Um, so you obviously can't talk about nightlife without talking about Edgewood Avenue. And that was where we hosted our uh, our forum last night. And I think Edgewood provides this glaring example of the need for help that's illustrated by this question. Neighborhood business districts and in-town neighborhoods have witnessed increased homelessness, crumbling infrastructure. Uh, trouble with trash, litter, maintenance issues. How would you ensure that these business districts receive the services and infrastructure help? That they need to remain these nightlife beacons that they've been for so long? And I'll go with Councilwoman.
All right, thanks. Uh, O Fourth Ward Business Association in the streets uh, in the Auburn area. Are an example of doing it right, although they are still very burdened. Uh. I believe that the partnership between the city with the deployment of resources needed to address all the issues that we ticked off. Uh, requires a sustained engagement of businesses working with the city. And unfortunately, it's a heavy lift, and I want to thank all the businesses. I, I see many friends here, uh, who have been engaged in that. But the city needs to do more. We need to get in front of these issues. We know the places where we have. Uh, housing insecure people. We need to deploy the resources before the businesses complain about it. Uh, to make sure that we give them services and help with uh, housing. In terms of the sidewalks and the orientation to the street of the businesses, we have a planning, we have a transportation department now. We need to help the businesses in a proactive way address their concerns. The barricades that were put out there, it was a great idea that did not work out the way that we thought. APD loved it. Businesses were hurt, some loved it, but we were trying to find a solution. We need more coordination between police, transportation, and all of our resources at City Hall to support our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shipman.
Sure. So I think, I think first and foremost, we have to make sure that we're actually responsive. Um, you know, we have seen over the last few months, the three-one-one program. Um, sometimes the app works, sometimes the app doesn't work. Sometimes you call and you try to leave a voicemail and you can't. I mean, we have to make sure that if we're asking people to tell us what's happening, that we actually can hear them and that they can, then we can actually respond. Two, I think we have to make sure that things like commercial frontage fees are actually used for street cleaning or actually used for trash pickup. What they are saying they were being used for, those fees were increased, but it doesn't feel like the services were increased. And I think that this is overall, we need to make sure that when we're collecting fees for something. Actually providing those services at that level. Um, and then three, I think that we, we have seen some around uh, homelessness and unshelter specifically, the Lyft program. Which uh, acquired the Hotel Donald Capital Avenue was a successful program in bringing folks. Into the process of finding long-term shelter. I think that kind of program using federal money can be expanded, which then gives us an actual pathway. For folks who are unsheltered, but fundamentally, we've got to be more responsive when people are trying to report. And finally, I just say, if we're going to do something like Edgewood, we have to think about the aesthetics. We can't just do it. We've got to think about how it looks, because in a commercial district, we've got to make sure, I mean. Right by Highland Bakery, right by where I live, we've, we've had, you know, orange barriers for months and months. There are better and. More beautiful ways to do things like that, that really matter when it comes to a commercial district.
Thank you. Um, about Mr. Russell.
You know, we can all sit here and tick off all the things that should be done and. But the problem that I see in the city of Atlanta, things are not getting done. And I think the problem there is a lack of leadership that is determined and that knows how to make things happen. We all want a better city. We all can identify these problems and, and, but the bottom line is, they've been there forever and a day. And nothing seems to ever get done in this city. That is one of the biggest complaints I have from residents, whether it's about crime or the, the infrastructure or the homeless. Or whatever, nothing gets done. It's studied to death and nothing gets done. So what I'm offering is leadership that will get the job done. That will bring people together in a constructive way and start actually tackling these problems and solving them rather than continually to talk about them and to study them. Because this, if we don't do this, it's going to, our city is already being torn apart by crime. And if we don't do this, things are just going to go downhill very fast. So what I'm saying is. We have got to have somebody in office that knows how to make things happen, that can bring people together and get the job done.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we do love our studies at City Hall. Uh, Mr. English, you're up.
Yeah, so I think, uh, you know, we need to, again, make it easier uh, to support good actors and make it easier to actually go after bad actors. I think we have to have an adequate feedback loop between government and our actual businesses and really all of our residents. Uh, to ensure that the policies that we're actually enacting have the intended effect. I ultimately believe that what gets measured is ultimately what gets done. And so that, uh, that means from a council perspective, we actually have to measure and adequately report on. Uh, the impact of uh, the policies that we institute and how those policies are actually impacting communities. Um, I believe it, I talked earlier about how Edgewood is a, is a, is a good example of a bad idea going wrong. Uh, because of the lack of um, uh, feedback between the actual businesses who were impacted by the closing of Edgewood. I also believe that we have to move from a reactive posture in government to a proactive posture. Uh, we know that homelessness is a, is a huge issue. We know that crime is an issue. Uh, we've, and we've known these things for years, and so we got to get into the action business of actually addressing. Uh, the issues that face our communities instead of consistently talking about them. And uh, we need to be urgent about the solutions that we uh. Uh, propose to get us from where we are to ultimately where we want to be.
Thanks. Mike Jordan, back to you.
Excellent, excellent. So, um, pretty easy question, uh, should be at least. Uh, so I'm going to see if we can kind of keep this one moving along. Um. Outside of your campaign responsibilities and, you know. Even if it's next door or down the street or just somewhere within the area. Like to know, when was the last time uh, you visited uh, the districts of Edgewood? Where did you go? What do you do? What do you like to see? Um, and really like, this gets into an idea of, it's just talking about, we can always complain, as you said, Mr. Russell. But what would you really like to improve in those specific areas of the places that you organically and naturally just visit? So what do you really love? Where do you go when you're out here? What do you do? What would you like to do to improve that place?
We definitely want to hear when the last time you were there was off the.
And that also is a very good call out. When was that? Thank you.
Uh, Mike, just to clarify, you mean Edgewood specifically?
It can actually be any of District Two, District Five, District Six. Just wanted to know, when was the last time? Where were you? What do you do? What do you love about it? How could it be improved?
Well, I could start. Um, so I walked up to Field Day last night because my kids love the plain burgers there, uh, and we can find things. So this is on the. This is right on Highland Avenue. You know, I, I took Freedom Path um, up to walk there and you know, their, their um. Their back porch looks out on Freedom Path. I think that's a really good example of great design, right? When you've got a public amenity like the path, you've got a business that basically fronts that on its backside, fronts the street on its front side. But, you know, if you, if you go to the front and you look right there on the bridge on Highland, going, you know, towards downtown, you've got orange barriers that have been there that now have graffiti on them. And so I, and, and the trash can that sits literally at that crosswalk is almost always overflowing. It is literally the trash can that is sort of heaping almost every day. And I think those are two examples of things that need to be improved across the district. I mean, I've gone to Yellow Chrome over the last couple of weeks and, you know, you see similar kinds of things. So I think it's really those basic amenities because uh, there are really interesting spaces in these districts, but we're not keeping them really clean and maintained to get the most out of them.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. English, looks like you popped on, ready?
Yeah, uh, I was at uh, Georgia Beer Garden maybe um, a week and a half ago. Um, uh, there is actually. Actually, uh, today, there is uh, an endorsed candidate forum, uh, hope, not forum, but event hosted by. Uh, neighbors from more neighbors that will also be at uh, Georgia Beer Garden. I love the food from Finn and Beathers. Uh, the owner is a good friend of mine. Uh, they've got a great lamb chop dish. Uh, and what I hear uh, from those folks all the time is essentially that. Uh, the city does not adequately listen or respond uh, to their issues. And, and so, again, you know, that Edgewood Avenue, uh, the closure of it specifically is a good idea going wrong. And because of the lack of the feedback mechanism between government and the folks actually impacted by the decisions. Um, uh, it's, it, it, it has caused a deleterious effect on uh, those particular businesses. And so we can do more, we should do more. Uh, but Edgewood's a great space. Uh, the former owner of um. Of uh, the restaurant next to Corner Tavern, uh, is a good friend of mine, uh, as well. And uh, you know, that's a spot that is a restaurant that essentially is functioning as a nightclub. And, and those are the kinds of folks that we want to make it uh, harder uh, for folks to uh, continue to do business. Uh, in, in the city if they're not living up to the rules and regulations of the city.
Is that Cafe Circa?
Cafe Circa, yes.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Archibong.
Uh, let's see, I've been to Georgia Beer Garden a gazillion times. My campaign office is in the uh, O Fourth Ward area, um, in the Odd Fellows Building. I am in the village all the time. I can practically see it from my house, and so I am a frequenter of um, the business all across um. Those two communities. You know, we've heard a lot about these barricades, and I want to thank the business owners who came to Amir and I and said, we've got to do something after eight years of this being a. Um, out of control situation. Uh, it was an idea that percolated through the Office of Mobility and having the courage to implement something, but not having the transportation department support us. Was the tragedy. But I want to thank the business owners. It's easy to fly by and make commentary, but the hard work was done by the businesses, and I celebrate you and I thank you, and we will do better. We're just trying to make the area better and safer for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome. So your answer was Georgia Beer Garden?
My answer was Georgia Beer Garden, Barden, Odd Fellows Building, um, East Atlanta. I live there. I'm there all the time. Um. Was up there last night, uh, mainly because we're getting a lot of complaints like we get on Edgewood around the out of control street vending. So, um, yeah, I'm in those areas all the time. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. All right. Uh, that would leave uh, Mr. Shipman can drop in here. Uh, no, you went with freedom. I'm sorry, Mr. Russell.
So actually, the last time I think I was in the area was at a um, potluck for our church. At a private residence for the LGBTQ community uh, members in our um, church, which is the uh, the shrine down on Martin Luther King, right downtown. Um, I cannot go out at night because I have a serious glaucoma, so I can't enjoy nightlife as much as I used to. But I think the things that upset me the most about not only that area, but across the city is the lack of city services, starting with uh, protection that makes our folks feel safe. So they feel like they can go out and enjoy the nightlife. Um, the horrendous homicides that we're having across the city that revolve around nightlife. We need to address that immediately. And then the basic city services. Um, I don't mean to offend anybody, but of all the western cities I've lived in, I've never lived in a place that was this raggedy when it comes to sidewalks. Trash pickup in roads, these potholes and plates, they've got to go, and that affects everybody across this city. And what I'm offering is to get this cleaned up.
If I had to guess, I think it was the Raggedy Line that got you beat. But um, I think everybody went on that one. Uh, thank you all for the answer. Sean, back to you.
Yeah, um, Mr. Russell, I think what you said kind of uh, tees me up for this next question. Um, many businesses have been grappling with this crime wave. And at a time when these businesses are already working to recover, if not just survive from the pandemic's economic side effects. Public safety issues have made it increasingly difficult to draw customers. So how can you address crime and policing? And do businesses negatively affected by this crime wave deserve any recompense for what they've been through? We'll start with Mr. English.
And can you say that last part again, the recompense part?
Do the businesses that have been disproportionately afflicted by the crime wave deserve any recompense for their troubles? And I, I, we've asked this question at some of the previous forums, and it's always interesting to see how people interpret the word recompense. I mean, I don't know if that's something along the lines of. Reparations for the businesses that like financially that have been affected, or if it's loans to help them get back on their feet or what, but. I mean, it's pretty open-ended up to you.
I think, look, I think we owe our business owners what we owe all of our citizens, and that is a clean and safe city. I think um, that the biggest and best thing that we can do for our business owners is ensure uh, that their customers actually feel safe. Uh, walking into those uh, businesses. And right now, that's not the case, and so. And so uh, we've got to do a better job on public safety. We need more officers on the street. We need to leverage technology more. We need to increase uh, our capacity to address the root causes of, of, of crime. But I think, uh, I don't know, I mean, the recompense question is an interesting one, but I think the biggest and best thing that we can do of, again, for our businesses is ensure that their customers are safe walking into those businesses. And quite frankly, right now, that's not happening. Um, by creating uh, cleaner, safer city, a more accessible city that has uh, functioning sidewalks and access to transportation, uh, that's good for business. And so I think we have to focus like a laser on creating uh, a safer city and, 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 and uh, curving this kind, this current violent uptick, I'm sorry, this current uptick in violent crime.
All right.
Talk if you want.
Forgot to unmute myself. Uh, how about Mr. Russell?
So my profession has been in law enforcement. And I think one of the best ways to solve this is through community policing, which I've done before, so that cops become a part of the community. Uh, it's not just some cops, it's every cop. And we need more police officers and more technology to make that effective. But I think that is one of the best ways to ensure that we have safety on our streets. Uh, and there are a lot of things that go along with that, like our dysfunctional camera system. Um, we don't have drones, which other cities have, that we should have had a long time ago. We should have two uh, person patrols with police officers, because that cuts down on people who try to challenge the cops and it makes it safer for everybody. Um, but we really need to police our city better. And that's not over policing, that's smart policing. And I believe the key piece to that is effective community policing, where every cop on the beat is a part of that community. They live in that community, they work in that community, they know and love that community. And I think that is where we, where we start to turn this mistrust around with our police force and make them a more effective and viable force for our city. Again, I've done these things before and I'd like the opportunity to do them again here in Atlanta.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shipman.
Sure. So if I, if I think about trying to make a commercial district safer, fundamentally, we want the environment to be good. We want it to be well-lit. We want it to be well-maintained. We want there to be traffic not impeding on that. So pedestrian types of things, or even some of the innovations we've seen, like uh, taking parklet, park uh, parking spaces and turning them into outdoor dining, those types of things to encourage people to be out. And then also making sure that there is enough of a police presence that, that people feel good. So I think that we need to, one, make sure that our commercial districts feel good for people to go out. I do think that street racing is a piece of that, that we need to make sure through traffic calming measures and through other measures that we create better pedestrian spaces. And then I also think that we do need enough police officers that people feel safe. But fundamentally, I think from a commercial district perspective, we have to start with what is going to make people want to stay and linger and be here and then work backwards from there. And part of that is policing, but a lot of that is the environment of that commercial district and making sure it feels good for people to be out and about. And the recompense, for the recompense, I don't know. I would want to study whether there are disproportionate businesses and disproportionate areas to what everybody has experienced. That would be the key input that, that I just don't know to answer your question.
Gotcha. Um, all right, Councilwoman, take us home.
Thank you, Sean. You know, I had this conversation with uh, Major Reese and he is a phenomenal uh, zone commander. Uh, he has East Atlanta Business District, the Village, as well as uh, Old Fourth Ward. And the question was, we are seeing in East Atlanta now, some of the things that we have been living through and struggling with in Old Fourth Ward. And Major Reese said this, and the business owners will appreciate it. He said, you know what, we're kind of finally turning a corner in Old Fourth Ward. I know I need to deploy resources to get ahead in East Atlanta, but I don't want to lose the benefit of what we've been doing in Old Fourth Ward. That's the kind of leader that I think we want to meet, uh, have in our law enforcement space. Recognizing that the businesses in Old Fourth Ward have suffered for years and finally, there seems to be some traction and some engagement. And I can't thank the business leaders enough for your sustained engagement. But we've got now a zone commander who's saying, how do I not lose traction and not lose uh, what's happening in East Atlanta? And so he's trying to deploy his men and women in a way that he keeps the fourth movement in Old Fourth Ward, yet not get out of control in East Atlanta. It's a tension, this the right kind of tension that we need to have as we look at what is fair for those businesses that have suffered under a crime wave that has just been unimaginable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archibald. Um, and that being uh, the question, I believe we are now at the closing statement portion of the day. So as we originally had, uh, Ms. Archibald was one of the last, we're going to have her go first with her thirty-second closing statement. And uh, we'll just continue to go with Mr. English, Mr. Russell, and then Mr. Shipman. And uh, take it away. Thirty seconds is yours.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am a small business owner. I've been on city council for twenty years. And so I get the practical and also have a vision for what can make Atlanta the dream and the best place that it can be. I have the experience that it takes from day one to lead a council with the challenges that we've been facing, because I have a strong track record of being independent, a visionary and being thoughtful in listening to those leaders and community folks who step up to the plate and say, hey, I have an idea, I have a concern, let's work together. Please vote for Archibald to continue that legacy of a strong leader, leading other leaders on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archibald. Mr. English.
Thank you so much. This has been a, an incredibly uh, poignant conversation and timely. Uh, I believe in business. I believe in our small businesses and frankly, we need to change the way in which this city does business. Uh, we need to flip the, the way in which we invest uh, in these large corporations on its head and ensure that those resources actually gets to the hands of our small businesses, because we know when we invest in them, they grow our economy, they hire locally and there are tangible, real, uh, meaningful and immediate benefits uh, to our communities. And so uh, my name is Courtney English. I'm running for council president to ensure that your voice is heard and to ensure that we're building in Atlanta that works for everyone. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. English. Mr. Russell.
Thank you. You know, despite being a political outsider, I'm number one in the polls. And that's because the message that I'm delivering to people is resonating, because I have the most experience in areas that count in public safety and city management. And I'm offering people a new type of leadership that actually gets things done in this city. So I'm asking for your support and all your, your support to help me make our city the cradle of the nonviolent civil rights movement, to make those words mean something again, and to help us all work together to make our city safer and better for every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell and Mr. Shipman.
Well, thanks for having this. Um, thanks for everybody who um, has sent in all the questions. You know, I am running for this because I've had an incredible Atlanta journey, starting the Center for Civil and Human Rights, um, working with the arts community, being the head of the Woodruff Arts Center, also being long involved in Fourth Board, whether it's the, the effort to save David T. Howard or the Freedom Park Conservancy. I believe that we are in a need of not only doing a trickle-down approach, big companies that somehow create jobs, but a different approach to growing Atlanta. We're going to grow, but the question is, are we going to grow across the whole city? And are we going to grow with small businesses and neighborhoods? That's what I'm committed to. I've done big things in the city and I'm excited to be the next city council president. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, would we like, we have any closing statements from the uh, Old Fourth Ward Business Association, Emma?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone one more time for calling in on a Saturday morning and for all the candidates for being flexible with your schedules to make this work. I really appreciate y'all having, y'all being here and being able to have this conversation. Um, you know, one thing I want to mention, because I'd be remiss if I didn't uh, kind of defend businesses a bit in this moment. We talked a lot about good actors and bad actors and operators as it comes to businesses. And I just want to highlight and kind of reiterate, uh, when it comes to following the rules and regulations, when they are broken in the, the way that I personally believe they are, and I think a lot of you do too, um, it is hard to define who that good actor is and who that bad actor is. And so um, I would ask all y'all to, let, let's fix uh, the regulations first before we determine, you know, who's operating uh, outside of the, the current regulations. Uh, but thank you guys so much again. Thank you to all our sponsors. Thanks to Little Five Points Business Association. And I hope you guys enjoy this wonderful day. There are still some seats open for our mayoral forum tomorrow. So hope that if you're not registered already, you can grab those and I'll see you tomorrow on the rooftop of Palm City Market.
All right, how about a quick awkward virtual round of applause for the candidates for coming out?
Thank you, everyone. Uh, we will see you all later.
Have a good weekend.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.